You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 8th, 2024 meeting of the Michiana Shores Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, states, and the Constitution.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, we will do this evening, we're going to, before we actually adopt our agenda, we are going to do a roll call first and then we're going to suspend our meeting and we're going to move into a public hearing regarding the budget for 2025. So, I'm sorry, I didn't add that there and nobody else taught me either. I'm going to claim innocence here. Anyway, that's it. Joan likes the budget.
No, I was not aware.
All right, Jones? All right. Maybe I'll start their roll call so we can get moving. Okay, President Diana Dubris. Here, Samantha Arndt.
Here, President of the Council.
Ralph Fox, absent. Sam Paxton.
Here.
Rich Young.
Here.
Joan Lewis, we know is here. Attorney Brad Adamsky.
I'm here.
Fire Chief Gary Bendix.
Here.
Police Chief Mark Listak.
President.
Park Board President Gene Paxton.
She's here.
Present, okay. BCA President Matt Bowen, absent. Plan Administrator Ray, absent. Plan Commission President, I S X, not here today, okay, absent. Website and Technology Samantha, we know is here. Board Commissioner Bob Skalkowski is absent today. Okay, I am now going to suspend the meeting to hold a public hearing on the budget for 2025. So, consider the meeting suspended at, I think it's 7:13, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, 7:13 PM. Is there anyone here who has questions at all about the, about the budget for the upcoming year for the town, for the 2025 fiscal year? We have to, well, we do have to. Notice of this budget was published in the newspapers and the hearing taking place today, so, you know, notice it going to everybody. Brad, how long should we wait?
You can take a motion.
Okay.
There's no comment.
There's nobody here and if somebody should happen to come in, because they were late, we can always pop back into it, okay? So, I'll take a motion to suspend the public hearing.
The motion to suspend the public hearing.
Okay, I second that motion. All right, Samantha Arndt, seconds to suspend the meeting, the public hearing. Thank you very much. All right, and we are now going to resume again the regular Town Council meeting. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, now, we need to move into adopting the agenda and I know that there are going to be a few changes in here. I did not have anything under resolutions or ordinance, so, just to make sure for the record, the budget, approving the budget, is going to go under the resolutions and ordinances as well, correct? Okay, so, budget approval is going to go under here as well. We have a salary ordinance. Is this being presented for us to approve tonight or is this?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So, I'm adding those two things to the resolutions and ordinances. Now, Sam, you had mentioned adding something.
Um, yes, I thought that I'd follow your new, new business would be the discussion of the Town Council support for the Lucas.
Okay, very good. So, let's put them under the new business.
And then, is the drainage board on there too?
The drainage board is part of the reports and it would also come from the attorney.
Yeah, it's either under White Dick's order.
Perfect, okay. I don't have my notes, I mean.
I'm going to read it.
What's that?
I'm going to read it. You go.
Yeah, but I'm projecting, so, actually, I can't pull up my notes. Okay, all right.
I'm projecting at the same time.
Okay, but then, that's a good thing that I did bring a point in paper one to look at. Okay, so, let us, now, if any other additions, corrections, deletions from our agenda? Did you want to look at?
There are several executive minutes to.
Yes, oh, that's right, okay. I added one and then we have one from the, uh, August.
September.
I have September 16th included.
Then, there's one for July 24th.
Oh, July 24th, okay.
July 30th.
And, and one was for budget, correct? One was budget.
One was for the budget, right.
Right, okay.
But that's an ordinance.
Well, that, an ordinance is an ordinance, but you did, you did submit minutes.
For September 30th.
Okay, July 24th was an executive session, September 16th executive session, and pre-budget meeting was July 30th. Yes, okay. So, I've added those three to the section on minutes. Approval of the meeting minutes of September 10th, approval of September 16th executive session, approval of the July 24th executive session, and approval of the July 30th pre-budget Anything else?
None.
Okay, if not, then I need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All right, thank you.
Second motion.
Samantha, um, seconds, it has been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Anything else amended besides what you just read? For July 24th executive meeting and a pre-budget.
I added those and then we added under resolutions, we have budget approval and salary ordinance. That's under the resolutions. And I also included a section on the public hearing, right after roll call.
And then, Sam had something under new business.
Yes, oh, Joan's here. Sam added under new business, Town Council support for the Lucas apparatus, second page. I'll clean this up and get you a copy tomorrow, Joan, okay?
It could be an idea.
You could see this tomorrow, okay? All right, so, we had a motion, we had seconded, asked for a vote of ayes, and I believe everybody answered aye. Okay, so, that was four ayes to approve the agenda. Okay, let's move on to the minutes then, and let's begin the way we have written here. Approval of the meeting minutes of September 10th, 2024. I noticed that Samantha had sent some corrections.
Yes, they were correct.
Yes, okay, and your second copy. Any other questions or comments on the minutes from last month?
I didn't go through.
Okay. Okay, Rich, are you still checking them or are you okay on those?
Look.
Okay, all right, so, then I need a motion to approve the minutes of September 10th.
I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 10th.
Okay, I need a second.
Sure.
Okay, Sam Paxton, seconds, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, four ayes, and those minutes have been approved. Uh, now, let's move on to approving the memorandum of the September 16th executive session.
No questions on that.
Any? Any comments, any questions, no? In that case, if there are no comments and questions, I need another motion.
Which will do you?
We're doing the September 16th executive session memorandum.
That's okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the memorandum.
Okay.
Executive session on.
16, okay. I need a second.
Second that.
Samantha Arndt, seconds, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now, let's move on to the approval of the July 24th executive session memorandum. Any questions or comments on that one? It was a continuing, I mean, that was, yeah, the first, I don't know, I don't remember. Oh, it was on litigation, okay. All right.
No questions on that one.
No questions on that one, then, I need a motion. Rich? Okay, Rich Young was making a motion, I need a second.
Sure.
Okay, Sam Paxton, all in favor, indicate by saying aye, I'm sorry.
July 24th?
No, that one is, oh, yeah, July 24th, yes. I, okay, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's four ayes, and that motion has been approved. Uh, let's move on to the July 30th pre-budget meeting. Any questions on those minutes?
No.
No.
Okay, how about you, Rich? Joan sent these today, I don't know if you, you know.
No, they need to be sent before the, not the day of.
No.
That's why plans might have been out the most.
Well, but what happens when, when we have someone who's working, it makes it very difficult to suspend work.
I understand that. What do you want me to do?
It possible to get them out earlier.
Another computers.
So, last week, no, just maybe a couple days earlier.
I didn't start them just today or yesterday. I started them sometime.
Okay, thank you, Joan, it was just, you know, a comment about getting approved. Thank you. Um, if those can send out today.
Yeah.
All right, do you want to see that? You did read it?
Yeah.
Oh, you're good, okay, all right, so, are there any questions or concerns? No, okay, then I need a motion to approve the pre-budget meeting.
I approve, approve.
Okay.
I second that motion.
Samantha Arndt, seconds, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, four ayes, and that has been approved. Okay, let's move on to the clerk treasurer invoices and claims. I did not get anything via email.
I have one of those.
Oh, those are the things on the table, okay, all right. All right. Okay. Do we need, I think we need to go over every single item on here, because these are available.
What is the payroll? The total payroll on the amount was $21,951.28, and you have a breakdown of the general fund, the motor vehicle, highway, parking wreck, apple development and risk, excuse me, refuse fund, and off of the amount that is transferred over to the budget.
What is the figure of $26,616 for the grants subsidies?
Oh, that's on the next one. Well, let's do this one first, the payroll. Let's do the payroll first, okay? Comments and questions on these? I think part of this is where it's moved from one fund to another in order to make up the amount for the payroll, correct, Joan? Do we need to make a motion? I need a motion for approving vouchers.
I make a motion to approve the September 30th payroll.
Payroll, that's it, all, okay. I need a second, Rich Young, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay, four ayes, and then, those vouchers have been approved. Uh, we move on to the October 8th, 2024 vouchers. Okay, which comes up to $12,49,981.96. Now, Sam, you have a question here.
The grants, so, the subsidies amount of $26,616 is?
Flaremore.
I'm sorry.
Flaremore.
Oh, the mower, oh, okay.
And the next item, where it says park improvements, I don't know if it's going to stay in that area, but there's $2,458 for, um, extra add-ons.
For what, adds for what?
For the flaremore.
Oh, okay.
Right.
I see, okay. All right, we have police, fire in here, water, park maintenance, Tina, rental, videotaping, meetings, is the videotaping meetings, is that a yearly or quarterly?
Quarterly.
Quarterly fee, okay. All right, any other questions? Concerns, comments? If not, then I need a motion to approve.
Remove.
Okay, Rich Young, I need a second.
Second.
Sam Paxton, seconds, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, four ayes, and the motion has passed. Okay. All right, now, we would move into, we will move into the next, okay, please, assign these as we have time here, okay? Let's move on to the report on the status of outstanding collections of fines as required by ordinance. Have, you had a chance to submit that to the town attorney, Joan?
Not yet, but he's going to be getting them, there's four of them.
Okay, all right.
I got it.
You got it already?
You got it, thank you.
All right, good, okay, so, that has been done. Okay, thank you. Uh, let's move on to the resolutions and ordinance, and we are addressing today the budget for the town, as well as an ordinance that pertains to the payroll. So, just move over here. So, let's start out with the appropriations ordinance, or resolution for appropriations and tax rates. We do not have a, is this enough? We don't have a resolution number here?
I have the resolution number on the one.
Oh, on one of the copies?
I didn't care, but one I sent out.
Okay, so, what is the resolution?
2024 dash 05 for the resolution for the budget.
Okay, very good. Okay, so, now, this is the same resolution that we, resolution, this is the same budget that we looked at and, um, over the first hearing, and this is the, now, it's being presented to us the second time around?
I haven't changed anything.
Okay, everything is the same. Any questions or concerns? Should we read the, through the whole ordinance? No? Okay.
It's published.
Okay, so, this is an ordinance, uh, resolution for appropriations and taxes, ordinance number 2024 dash zero five, are we calling it an ordinance or a resolution?
An ordinance.
Ordinance, okay.
We just crossed off the resolution.
Yes, I am, okay, very good. I need then a motion to approve the appropriations and tax rate, taxes, well, for the budget for 2025.
I'm motion to approve the ordinance for appropriation and tax rates for 2024, 2025.
Okay. Sam Paxton has made a motion, maybe a second?
Second.
Rich, okay, Rich Young seconds it. Sam Paxton made a motion to approve the budget for the fiscal year of 2025 for the town of Michiana Shores in Indiana. Rich Young has seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the ayes have it, and this ordinance has been approved. Okay, now, we have another ordinance, and that is for the, it is ordinance 2024 dash 04. Joan left copies over here on the desk. It is a continuing ordinance to authorize compensation rates and salaries for the town of Michiana Shores, Indiana for calendar year 2025. Samantha, would you like to read this out for us or?
Sure.
Where did you say the copies was?
All right, Joan, I thought you made copies for everyone or did only me, did only I get?
I made a copy, but he had not brought them back, so.
Okay. Did you get a copy? All right, okay. You did not get a copy, okay. Sam, do you have a copy too?
I have it, I'm on.
Okay, all right, okay.
Town of Michiana Shores ordinance 2024 04, a continuing ordinance to authorize compensation rates and salaries for the town of Michiana Shores for the calendar year 2025. Whereas, the Town Council of the Town of Michiana Shores, Indiana, has continuously and previously established and provided compensation rates and salaries for employees and officials of the town of Michiana Shores, and whereas, the Town Council has previously approved enactments, resolutions, and ordinances for the purpose of providing compensation rates and salaries that have been continued and intend to be without expirations from year to year, and whereas, the statutory deadline established by the state for towns to adopt a salary ordinance for 2025 is December 31st, 2024, since the salary ordinance must be adopted the year preceding its effectiveness. Now, therefore, it is hereby ordained and enacted by the Town Council of the Town of Michiana Shores, La Porte County, Indiana, as follows. Is existing compensation rates and salaries for the employees, officials, and servants of the town as follows. These compensation rates shall continue at the most recently enacted budgeted amounts, levels, and rates for the year 2025 and beyond, or until modified or amended by official action under law.
Am we going to go through and read all this? Yes.
Great. 2025 budget rates, Town Council President, $2,500. Town Council Members, $2,000. Clerk Treasurer, $13,775. Clerk Treasurer Refuse, 750. Building Commissioner, $25.
That one seems, is that going to be an hourly rate, Joan?
What?
Building Commissioner. It's $25.
It's on the low, there's the code enforcement.
Oh, it should be 750.
What's that?
$750.
For what?
I touched that.
For the building commissioner?
The building commissioner gets $750, just like everybody else that has.
Okay, that needs to be corrected because it says $25 here.
Oh, yes, I understand that.
BCA Chair is $750. BCA Secretary is $1,500. Code Enforcement Officer slash Building Commissioner is $25 an hour plus $45 cellphone, is that a one-time fee of cellphone or is it per month?
Monthly.
Per month, so, that needs to be amended. Road Commissioner, $750. Park and Recreation Chair, $750. Is that the Park Board President?
That's correct.
Park Board President.
All the chairs get $750.
I'm just having the name correct so I know who Park and Recreation Chair is. Plan Commission Chair, 750. Plan Commission Secretary, 750. Road Maintenance, $25 an hour. Part-time Office, 7,590. Refuse Clerk, 3,330. So, what's the difference between Clerk Treasurer Refuse and Refuse Clerk?
Clerk Treasurer Refuse is just like a chair over the other office with supervision. And on the BCA Secretary, they've had it $1,500 because when it first started, there was an awful lot of work with it, and then they moved it up. So, it's up to the council if they ever want to change that. Okay, they want to change that to an hourly or whatever you want to do with it.
Well, we're, we have, not going to address it right now, that would have to be addressed in the future.
Right.
So, if I continue reading the ordinance, those are all the rates, any questions, anything need to be repeated?
I'm good.
Rich?
Good.
To repeal this provision, all prior ordinances or resolutions or parts thereof inconsistent with any of the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. The separability clause, if any section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance be deemed to be invalid or unconstitutional by a court of competent jurisdiction, such provisions shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance. The emergency inaccurate and effect clause, the council hereby declares an emergency, and this ordinance shall be in full and effect from and after its passage and adoption by the Town Council of the Town of Michiana Shores, County of Port, Indiana, or as thereafter as provided by law. And then, it will say passed and adopted by a majority vote of the Town Council of the Town of Michiana Shores on the date if we so move and pass and agree to this ordinance. Great, so, do we have any questions or cons, council members?
You want this done and cleaned up for the next meeting?
Yes, please. That means we probably can't vote on it today.
You can vote on it tonight for first reading if you want.
Yeah, okay, cool. Okay, and then, Joan will copy that with the notes. Okay, I'll clean up my notes a little bit, but yes. All right, so, a motion to approve.
So, can we get a motion to approve on first reading?
Just this, the first reading, because we're going to, yeah, because we're going to do it again, okay, and then we can say. All right, all right, so, you move to approve.
I move to approve the first reading of the ordinance, right?
Yes, okay, I need a second.
Sure.
All right, Sam Paxton, all right, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, and we will continue with the second reading at next month's meeting, where they cleaned up the copy. Okay, uh, we can move into departmental reports. Police Chief Mark Listak, please.
Good evening, everyone. For the month of September, while Michigan State Farm responded to 408 calls, so, compared to 278 calls we've serviced, and in the period this year for an increase of 130 calls during the month of September, 10 incident reports documented, total of six individuals were arrested, one felony arrest with possession of narcotics, three misdemeanor arrests for operating or vehicle intoxicated, and two misdemeanor arrests for driving with a suspended driver's license. No major reports or incidents to share. I would like to let everybody know that during the month of October, we'll have an increase in traffic enforcement here in the town of Michiana Shores. We started this week, in fact, yesterday afternoon, on El Portal, a fellow man in parking, stopping a mortgage, doing over 40 miles per hour on El Portal, and found that he was driving on a, driving, driving on a suspended driver's license with a prior conviction, and therefore arrested him and issued some citations. So, I just want to give everybody a kind of an advance notice that we do a little bit more traffic enforcement during the month of October.
Okay.
Chief, have you, have you been able to gather any data coming off the radar? We have not downloaded it yet, so, um, we'll probably get this month and maybe at the next month's report, and advance it, I'll share that with everybody, and then I can answer any questions. Maybe, maybe it's just, not just me, but it seems like a few coordinators.
That's what I thought too, which is a good thing.
We'll wait for the past.
Yeah.
I'll get that to you, and then, we can download it, do a white eye and everything.
All right, great, thank you very much. Any other questions for chief? No? Okay, thank you. All right, Fire Chief, Gary Bendix, please.
Good to see everybody again.
Yeah, good to see you too.
Uh, for the month of September, we spent 107.42 hours on everything. Uh, we had four meetings during the month, and then we had two calls in Michiana Shores, one on, uh, let's see, 9/17 on Greenwall, it was a medical call, and then, uh, the tree fire lines tied up in the trees or something on El Portal, which, but I knew you had a couple hours.
Yes, we did.
So, uh, around the net, um, don't forget about Pancake Creek, this is lovely, 7 to 10, see everybody there.
Yep, 7 to 10? 7 o'clock?
Well, sorry.
Oh, yeah. Wait a minute.
Thank you. Just while we have here.
Just a minute, chief. Okay, go ahead.
You're going to be around for the discussion on the Lucas device, or? Oh, yeah. Okay. Is that, is that safe? Put it this evening? Yeah, we put it on the agenda to talk. Oh, okay, okay, well, I was, I have a chance to catch up with my assistant chief on it, but I've got a brochure that's lying on my desk, and a whole box of it written in. I think we're good now as far as the benefits of the device. I talked to the chief, so, that can be, use the feedback, use hers. Yeah, we're getting older against tough to do tasks. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay, uh, Building Commissioner, a report, I've got his building commissioner. Um, I emailed this out to everybody, I believe you had a chance to take a look at it, gave it to a couple who needed to see it. Uh, there are one, two, three, four, five, six permits that were issued, there's a couple that look like those numbers in between that may be missing, actually, we're up to eight, six, three was the last one, but this one, eight, five, nine, you know, was just signed later, so that, you know, it just appeared now, you know, for some, one reason or another, sometimes, you know, when it's filled up, even though the work has been started. So, and there are several more in the works. Um, I've received, I know there are two for sure Brenda's given me, I've gotten the, the plant commission's approval, that's the third one, I've got two calls in about the Bremen project, so, there's going to be more for next, for the next time around. Um, regarding the STR permit renewals, Kara Scholler was kind enough to. Regarding the STR permit renewals, Kara Scholler was kind enough to, you know, provide me. I couldn't find, you know, a document that I could edit at home. All of them were all the PDFs, so I couldn't, you know, record them. So Kara actually made me one, you know, and sent it to me today so that I'm able to edit it and add all the new information into that form. So, because I was going through all the documents that we have from debit, couldn't find the word document or an Excel file. So now I do have it in Excel, so I can actually edit it, and we'll be able to add things. So there are 12 short-term rental permits that have been renewed. One is still out there, but they did start a renewal process, and it's because they only, they will only be out of permit, you know, dating in December. So, you know, that one's moving along. Eight annual has been sold, and it was sold more than a year ago. So that permit, nobody should, if you see, you know, rental cars at eight annual, they should not be there, you know, so we'll need to check up on that. Thirty-eight of three Michigan, the drive actually expired last year in November, and I have written and reached out to the owner. I have not heard back. They did have a company called North Star Properties or something that this is handling it. So I have not reached out to that company, but I did reach out to the owner to try to find out, to see what's going on. I don't even know whether they're renting it. They're down the street from you, I know. I haven't, I haven't seen action ever.
Too many vehicles there.
Yeah.
But, so they're expired, and they would have to go.
Yes, in fact, I indicated, I indicated that to the owner in the email that I sent. I said that you would have to go through a process to kind of applying to the town council, if, you know, because it's been, it's expired. So there was a new one that was approved only in actual May. They got their permit actually, I think, at the beginning of July. So that's the House on Sunset. So that's the status for the BCA, the STR permit renewals. The BCA special use grants. One was granted in June of 2022, but it was never used. So according to our ordinance, so the way we've got it written, anybody who doesn't use it loses it because they haven't used it. So, but we'll bring that back to, you know, and then, you know, take a look at it, and send everybody the papers on it. One has submitted part of their, there's an individual who has submitted part of their application papers. And I did speak with Matt Bowen, and he was asking whether he had some other kind of documents. I said, but I don't have anything else for them. This is someone named Shirley Moy, and the residence is like 390506 on Oakdale. On Oakdale, okay? And then I got an inquiry. Actually, I got an inquiry from someone on Grove, asking about, you know, starting the rental, you know, the short-term rental process. But I do have to let you know that that person was already renting all this summer, and they have finally now, you know, I mean, I found out that they were renting, you know, late of the season, but I didn't, I didn't know they were doing that earlier, but they were doing, you know, I guess renting it during the summer. So they now, you know, decided to apply. And I told them, I said, I gave them all the information about the BCA, contacted Matt Bowen and Linda Stewieke, you know, for further information, and then, you know, call me if you have more questions. So that is my report as building commissioner and code enforcement. I have not been running around enforcing anything except building, so pretty much.
I have a question on...
Yes.
She doesn't have the proper forms filled out.
Okay.
She has just the...
Inspection?
No. She just has the short-term rental permit, which the council...
Right. Approves all the...
She doesn't have...
All the BCA?
The BCA. So there's a form for the BCA.
Yes.
I reached out to Linda, and she hasn't answered me. I need to get that form.
Okay.
They don't have a blank form.
The form, I thought it was one that's available online.
No.
BCA?
The short-term rental permit that the council...
I understand. Joan, I understand, but I thought that as well, there was an application.
There is a...
Okay, fine.
We checked that out.
Okay, well, then I'll remind, okay, Linda and Matt about that.
How could she get the council without having done that?
No, she couldn't, but, you know, that's why Matt said that she supplied something. That's, Matt just told me, Matt Bowen, said she doesn't have all her documents. Do you have something else? He asked me, and I said, I don't have anything else. I said, you know, I don't have any BCA documents. Nobody's giving me any inspections, any applications. So I threw it back, and they're in length, and I, again, I sent her the information. I said, with, you know, the phone numbers and the email address, just to check with Linda.
And do this sub difference with the property?
This is the one that's on Oakdale, the 3905, 3906, whatever that is.
Oh, okay.
On Oakdale.
Moy.
Moy, yes. That's the property, so. Okay.
There's a separate application for the BCA.
Yes.
For special use.
Right. She hasn't filled that out yet. She has a lot of the other forms. All right, so park board, can you ask me, Eugene? There it goes. I'm going to...
The progress on the regrade, regrab project has been painstakingly slow. Deadlines for this project have come and gone over the past six months. The contractor has given the park board a final completion date of Sunday, October 13th. The green adult swing in Kincaid Park broke down due to deterioration. The bulk of it was further broken and removed by Skidmark. The Save the Project, Save the Forest Project is going well, mainly due to the financial donation of approximately $20,000 in hard labor by resident Rob Tepperman. Chris Wolf, Amy Black, and Sam Paxton also have contributed. Maple City and Sawyer Garden Center have been involved. I would like the council to approve a wood sign to be posted in the area signifying this as the Save the Forest Project. I would also like this project mentioned on the website. A deposit of $4,000 was made by the boosters to secure scheduling of the tennis court resurfacing project for 2025. Lastly, the RFP for a three-year contract for park maintenance will be due on October 21st, with the opening of sealed bids at the park board meeting on October 28th. I'm encouraging everyone from the council and the treasurer to be present at that meeting. And I would like confirmation by the town attorney and the council on who decides and signs this contract. That's it.
All right. Thank you very much, Jean. Does anybody have a question for Jean? Okay. All right, thank you very much again. Pardon?
Oh, no, I would like confirmation on who signs the contract for the maintenance.
What's been done historically on that?
I, well, right now, I can't remember. Joan would have, I don't know who has the documents for the park board when we, when we signed. I'm trying to remember if it was the park board president. I was always the liaison there, so I don't know. Dolly was the park board president.
Can you tell me the deciding body for the contract?
I don't think there was a contract signed. I think what it was is they accepted the contract at a council, I mean, at a park board meeting.
Okay. So the park board approved it at a meeting?
At a meeting. I don't remember.
Did it ever go from there to the town council, or was that the end of it?
That was the end of it.
Yeah.
They've always been a challenge.
So the park board is the entity entering the contract.
Yes. So we... Go ahead, Jean.
The proper course is for the park board to discuss and recommend with the town council, and then the town council decides.
That's not how it's been done. That's what we were just told. What Joan just said is that it went before the park board, the park board voted, and they approved the contract, and it never then went to town council.
I can't hear.
Oh, so can you hear me, Jeanie?
Yes.
So we're understanding that previously, it never came in from the town council. The park board discussed it and voted on it, and that is how it moved forward.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Another, did you want to add something?
No.
Okay. Moving on. Road commissioner about Sokowski's number is here tonight. He did say that the, I guess, the shield or a guard for that plow mower has arrived and is being installed, and he will start working on the various trimming he needs to do here in town. So he says otherwise, it's been pretty quiet for whatever he had to do. Advisory plan commission, Isaac is not here. Sam wants to say anything?
The last meeting, we did approve an addition to be built. It was a property of at least 16 annual.
Correct.
And then we finalized the draft of the tree ordinance, and we sent it off to Brad for his review. I think Brad, I need to send you also the permit draft that we reiterated. So I'll leave that probably as, 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 as the meeting here. And then that's just the extent of it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's move on. BCA, there's nothing to add for BCA, and as a matter of fact, Matt does not even have to give me the date of the next meeting. White ditch and drainage board, I attended the meeting today, and a question was raised, you know, with regards to whether or not the town was going to continue taking care of the initial part of the nature path, the part that stretches from El Portal to Oakdale, or whether it would revert back to the drainage board. Essentially, it reverted back to them as it started this year. But it is also a decision we can make going forward, whether we want the county to continue handling this, or us. I'm going to ask Brad, the Brandon Ansker attorney, to speak to this when we reach the attorney report. Otherwise, there was nothing else, you know, mentioned with regards to that. Samantha, website?
I have a question.
Oh.
If I remember right, the drainage board wanted us to take over, I thought the whole...
That various things were mentioned, just like on the sign, but nothing was officially discussed. It was something Tony Hendricks had brought up, so it's not...
But they were going to give us the money they get?
Potentially, but it was Tony Hendricks who brought it up, not the drainage board itself. He's, he's the surveyor. So, you know, but, but that's all it was, and that's not what was being discussed today for instance, when it was brought up. But Brad will present a better force, you know, and we do that. Thank you, Rich. Okay. Let us go on. Nerpsy, there's going to be...
Can you just give me that song?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I meant, I, see, I thought you said it so fast. I'm sorry.
Nope. I sent out my report. I can't really blow up without getting rid of Jeanie here, but I can tell you that website is obviously still doing well. Traffic is actually back up. It was a little dropping last month, but it's back up. It's still good. People still come and find things. And I say most traffic comes on a mobile device. And top pages, the beach, beach, beach and trail pages have fallen down in popularity. Events are back up in popularity, mostly, I'm sure, because of Pancake Breakfast. Because a lot of some of the traffic was from the email that went out. Garlic mustard is actually creeping back up again in popularity. And we had actually eight contact emails in the month of September, which is, we've only been tracking, we've only been tracking recordings meeting like six months. That's the highest one. We have about five or six, but that's really all. Hopefully, it's been a long, strange trail back and forth with the Indiana Department Office of Technology to get our domain switched to an Indiana dot co. I'm fingers crossed that I have the last information from them, so tonight or tomorrow I can go fill out. I have to start a new request. I mean, I'm working with people, but I have to go through their portal to file a request to give me the last bit of technical information to make the switch in the way they want.
Yes. Okay, I saw that last email.
Yeah, exactly, because you do see that. Yeah, so that is all from the website.
Okay. All right. Any questions to Samantha? If not, we're moving on. Okay. Nerpsy, I have nothing else new to report about Nerpsy's activities. Let's go to, okay, unfinished business. We have a search going for the building commissioner code enforcement officer, and I'm going to hand that over to Sam for a report.
Yes, we're in a discussion with a few candidates of the position, and we're keeping the search open, but I think we, we've had some good conversations, so we'll continue on that path until we can find someone.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Now, any update, any response to the people who were contacted with regards to dead trees on private property?
No.
Nothing yet, okay. No news.
I got, well, we got confirmation last, last month. Both of them have received the...
So what? Okay, all right.
Signed to it.
Okay. Thank you on that. So let's see. Trimming, okay, we already know that trimming at street courts and outside properties, you know, is going to start as soon as, you know, Bob said, I guess he's, I think he's put it on, or he's putting it on, and we'll start trimming. I spoke to a couple more people in the neighborhood whose wishes are really unapproaching, and I did know of several of them trimming, and, you know, actually over this past weekend and even today. Okay, so that's done. And then LaPorte County Drainage Board, I put in the unfinished business here, you know, for input for the 20-year agreement. So I don't know, Brad, you want to take it off like right here then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can do that, please. So there were, we talked about this last month, but there were two memorandums of understanding. The first one has expired, and that was the section that we just talked about between El Portal and Oakdale. Then another one was adopted in 2020, and that went from Oakdale, between Oakdale and Meadow. So that one's still in effect. Those were agreements that this town council entered into with the county drainage board to, to enable the town to get grants, so their responsibility could come in for improving those sections of the ditch. So as part of that agreement, the town took over responsibility for maintaining those sections of the drainage ditch. Now, the town residents are still paying in a ditch assessment as part of their tax bills that goes into the county drainage board fund. So your choices at this point, basically with that previous memorandum expiring, or to go back before the county drainage board and see if they would entertain extending that if you still want to keep it under your local control. There are advantages and disadvantages either way, obviously. One is kind of the responsiveness. The town is doing it themselves. You're not waiting to put a petition into the drainage board and then getting a response from them. But then also, there's the cost, right? If you're doing it yourself, you're paying those costs, and then there's still, should be some reconciliation between the town and the drainage board as far as those funds that were set up. Was, under each memorandum of understanding, there was a maintenance fund that was to be established.
Oh. From the drainage board to pay the town?
LaPorte County Drainage Board will create a reconstruction fund, which will allocate approximately, the first one was $20,000, the other one was $36,000, from their maintenance fund, which will be designated for a portion of the local matching funds grant, so that money was set aside to be used to, to cover the expenses. And my understanding is you've been paying those expenses directly?
Yes.
So that's where I'm saying a reconciliation would need to be made.
Okay. So that has, we have some work to do then on that.
So that means that if we, that they have a fund, I'm just making sure I follow, they have a fund set up. So if we have been taking care of it and hired a contractor to clean up trees, we could have been recovering those funds from the Drainage Board.
And we haven't been?
I don't know if you have been or not, because there's not $56,000 in it, I can tell you that. They didn't give me the tax number, but it wasn't...
Those numbers are suspiciously like the grants we got.
Those numbers are the grants that we got.
And that's what you received?
Yeah.
Yeah. That was part of the grant.
And part of the agreement that we...
So was the fund established with the grant funds here? Is that what you did?
I have no idea. Joan was working on all of those. She was, has the history.
One thing is, they wrote the grant that the Drainage Board would be partners with us on the grant. And they paid $20,000 on the first grant, towards our first grant.
Okay.
And $30,000, like you said, on the second grant. They did not, that does not contain anything in there as far as the actual water line, the water area. We went up only so far to the water area. If anything has to be done with dredging that ditch again, that is still the county's. That's the way I understood it.
But you get any tree removals you've been paying for by the town?
Yes.
Tree removals, right.
And there have been some substantial expenses.
Tree removal would not be considered maintenance, only dredging?
No. Maintenance is a regular, tree removal is a regular part of maintenance for ditches throughout the county.
Mm-hmm.
So confused. Could we have been filing claims against the maintenance fund, or was that maintenance fund, was it all used up with the...
It sounds like the maintenance fund was created for the rehabilitation or whatever was done along the ditch.
Right.
So that's where you're saying those funds, that's where they went.
No.
In the meantime, there is a ditch fund at the county level that you are all paying assessments into.
Yeah.
So that money is, it may even be full. I mean, once those funds fill, then they don't get taxed anymore until they're used.
Most of that is from El Portal to Roushan, Michigan.
Right. Because this doesn't cover all of it.
Because there's no trail or anything there, and they didn't redo the banks.
Yeah. So they have been handling everything. He set up or...
The work...
They pay everything. I make a phone call.
Okay.
I let the secretary...
The Drainage Board handles that section.
Yes. And because, excuse me, because we have not had bad, you know, or extensive work that has needed to be done out there. They generally, it's just been a phone call. They either send somebody out, we don't have to go through a long process. In fact, they'll say, you know, I can send so-and-so out within two days or three days or whatever, because they're not huge amounts of money that were being sent, just to clear up, like to pull a tree out or to cut a few down, is what has happened in the past with regards to this. They've been very responsive quickly, you know, on that kind of stuff, so.
And I'm sure if we say, hey, there's a huge block and it's going to be a high rainy period that we're going through, it could be problematic with the...
Well, you know what? If there's, if we see that there is a problem or a problem might occur, that's when we would have to apply to them and say, you know, this is what's going on. They're not going to answer that on a phone call. That one will be, you know, to send them something and then you respond.
This means if they, if we kind of backed them, they would be startled that needs to be regravelled or the trails to the trail on the ditch?
No. No. It is only the ditch.
Only the ditch.
These are county drainage ditches. So they have to make sure that these ditches allow water to pass through. Okay? So we have been very diligent in the town about making sure that we don't leave branches or trees or something like this down or even over the, in case the water gets higher and you've got a tree or branches that are hanging over, that can also stop and pull up more branches that are coming down and so forth. So the town has been very diligent in taking care of all of that. But the Drainage Board has to take care of only that. That nature path was a project that the town started, and the fact that they had monies for us, we were able to make that agreement with them, and they allowed us to, they helped us to get our grant.
Oh.
Okay. But, you know, in order to help those.
That makes sense as well.
Okay.
So the way much money annually on average that we sent clearing trees and debris out of it?
I have no idea.
If we look back, I put through vouchers, they'd probably be able to take a look at that by looking at the old vouchers. You know, all I remember is several of the larger ones. And, you know, one was where we had like four or five trees, both east and west of Oakdale, that had come down and across. So those were taken care of. We hired someone to do that, and that was done. Actually, it might even have been, we got to remove those. But it was a great amount of money that we had paid to do that.
And I think that would be something the town would want to know before you make your decision, right? And on the other side of it, that would be useful information for the Drainage Board if it's coming back to them.
What kind of stuff?
What's our deadline to them responding?
They didn't give us a deadline.
They meet the second Tuesday of the month, just like you guys do. They just wake in the morning.
Okay. Okay. No more questions? All right. Then we can, you know, under new business, we have reviewing proposals by two engineering firms regarding the work on the CCMG applications required evaluations. So at the last meeting, I said I would work on trying to putting together some kind of an RFP. I did work on that. I was looking and researching through those requests for proposals for engineering firms, but some of these things were like 20 and 30 pages long, you know, and very, very detailed, in other words, for those kind of things. So what I did to make it easier is I used a sample that we had from the company that worked with us last time around, and they had explained in, you know, very simple language and using only several different, you know, like, I guess, like, you know, bullet points with regards to, you know, what is covered in the particular jobs. And so I can just, I guess I can just say that Global Engineering came back and gave us an estimate of what theirs would be. We got an estimate from Haas Engineering as well, and they gave us an estimate only for the first, you know, the initial part, that doesn't even move into the actual granting procedure that we got from Global Engineering. They only cover the part that handles the PISA report. Now, the PISA report is a pavement asset management kind of a report that has to be done frequently. It has to be entered, they used to last longer earlier, but, you know, the state keeps cracking things up, and now we have to do those virtually, it's got to be entered every year. This may last, this may be good for two or three years. On the other hand, we change it again and say it's not going to be good. Ours is already expiring, you know, because we were still able to use it for this year, but if, since we're doing it and applying in '25, we need to do a new PISA report. So the documents that I gave you showed you that Haas Engineering was charging $14,000 something or other, close to $15,000 for that portion of the job. I believe Global Engineering has presented us with, I think it's a $6,800 fee for presenting for that and actually even entering the information into the LTAP, which is through Purdue's, you know, program through Purdue, so, which we have to do. You know, I entered that last year in the year four and stuff, you know, they would enter that for us. And then Global Engineering gave us the other four. I didn't have my documents because they gave them to Rich. So there, it went on then through the entire application process and then a bidding process and the construction, you know, and then the finishing kind of a process. And the sums between the two firms are astronomically different. You know, so then I sent you an email today, and I don't, I have one more copy. Did you see that email that I sent?
So it came today? I did not.
Yeah. Okay. That's because I got it from him. He's away on vacation. He did not respond to me last week. So here are the sums. Sam, he would have gotten an email from me, I think, and he would share this. So right down here at the bottom, you could see in the words, the white print is his response to me. That's what I sent to him so that he would answer that.
This is from Global, right?
That, no, that is, those sums are from Haas Engineering. Global Engineering is different. Rich has a copy of Global Engineering. Rich, can you, go see? Okay. Can you give us the sums that are on Global Engineering, where there's four bullet points? One says application.
Okay. The application is $5,000.
Okay. What does this one say?
$14,900.
Okay. Go on, next one.
Design for the CCMG.
Okay.
Construction plan specifications, $10,005.
Okay.
$10,005?
$10,005.
This is $50,000.
Okay. The third bullet point.
Bidding is...
Bidding is what? I'm sorry?
$8,000.
$8,000? Okay.
Bidding here is $7,500.
Okay. And what is the last one?
Construction Administration and Observation, $9,000.
And this is $55,000.
Okay. So I mean, to do that sort of like a no-brainer, which company we should go with. Ralph actually contacted me, and he said he was of the opinion that he thinks that we should go with Global Engineering and get a good job for us last year, so that we should just go ahead and use them again. I mean, I would recommend doing that too, because we don't have these kind of sums of money. You know, if we, we're going to be lucky if we get...
It's like an $80,000 difference in costs, maybe $75,000. Because there's budgetary numbers.
Yeah.
It's the only one.
That's the only one. But, you know, it's a sizable difference, you know? It's a sizable difference in what it is. And in fact, I thought, yeah. So anyway, any other thoughts? And we, now, what we have to do, because the process is going to be moving forward, the engineering firm needs to have time in order to get all the paperwork done. So any kind of agreement we sign with them would have to be signed probably early in November, unless we sign it even earlier. The work has to be done and uploaded and submitted to, into the LTAP system by December 1st. That's the last day it can be submitted to them. And it has to be submitted to them in order for us to even apply for anything in January again. Okay. So this is a decision we have to put together probably between now and the next meeting. We can decide on it today if you want to, so, you know, approve to do, or, you know, we put it off until the next meeting. But I would say that there's really no, no reason to wait. I would not wait. I would suggest that we actually vote on it today.
It's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
It's actually like $82,000 difference.
I'm sorry.
I read through what you, what you have from Global, but after the signatures comes a 2024, 2025 fee schedule where it gives hourly rates.
Yes. Yes. They both have extra hourly rates listed.
On top of what they...
That was if we would need, on top of anything outside of the scope of, you know, what the job is. And they really held very closely to the agreements from the ones that we did in '23. They held very closely to those.
Valid.
Absolutely closely so.
Yes. Not a question.
Yeah. Okay. So in that case, I would need a motion, you know, to approve one or the other of these, you know, proposals.
And move that we move forward with the proposal with Global Engineering?
Okay. Global Engineering.
Global Engineering to put together a CCMG.
Yes.
CCMG grant.
Yes. Okay.
Twenty twenty seven.
All right. Second, second. Okay. Favor indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Four ayes, and that has been approved. Okay. Now, we have Sam brought up that we discussed support for the Lucas apparatus, the L-U-C-A-S, I believe. Is that what it is? Are those, is that the acronym or is it K-A-S?
The Lucas.
Okay. Apparates. So...
So Mike Chastain, Gary's Assistant Chief, approached us informally through Joan to see if the town would be willing to support financially the purchase of a Lucas device, which is, it's an automated CPR machine for first responders and EMTs to utilize. It's a life-saving device. And I think, you know, based upon the feedback that we receive from Chief Swisick, I will Garrett, Tom and Gary reach out to the village of Michigan. Mike indicated that they, since they have contracts with the village of Michigan and doing the beach, that they would be at some point approaching them for donations, financial donations as well. So I reached out to a contact that I know at the village and sent her the document that Mike had provided to us and said, hey, FYI, the volunteer fire department thinks this is a good idea, and we do too, and they're going to want, want to talk to you about possible participation in that. So she was open, and I think Gary or Mike will both are going to attend their meeting this Friday, I believe.
I'll be there. I might have a chance to get Mike and Joan. On the other hand, we're also, is that brochure the one of the pancake park?
I'm sorry?
I don't know. We just, I just saw things on my desk.
Oh, no. I, no, this is, I might have gotten it off their, I may have just heard the website.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So...
Oh, you talk about the Lucas machine, whatever it is?
The Lucas machine?
Yeah.
Yes. Automated secure.
This is the people on the table, so people agree.
Okay.
And ask for donations also.
Oh.
And the back...
Oh, that's very good.
Most of our history...
Yeah, that's, that's it.
That's good.
That's amazing.
Excellent. Okay, good.
Yeah. Plus the pancake park's...
Okay. But I think, you know, just my opinion is that, I think each of the three communities has vested interest in protecting their citizens and has, anything that can save a life or two is going to be, you know, worth the money that you guys invest.
Yeah. Definitely. Let me tell you, if you're ever on CPR, you were wore out in about three or four minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, I bet.
Where this thing, you just, there's a, like, C O R, it's a little bit of a, and then plant this on, so you have to get it up, and it goes...
The compressions.
That's the heart.
Good, or crushes.
Yeah.
It doesn't get tired.
Yeah.
So Joan, can you kind of give us guidance on financially, what the council could look at on this, or the town?
Good question. I haven't really looked at it.
I know you've thrown out a figure of $4,000.
That we still have available from the ARPAS.
Right. But that was before I found out that this Fillmore cost a heck of a lot more money than what was originally quoted to me.
That's not true.
At $26,000, but there was installation, and now there's extra parts. One on the boom, there was extra money spent on the boom.
Those were all included in the original documentation. Yes. Joan?
I'm not arguing over this. I just went over this with Sarah, and she explained it all to me. So I have to go back and see what's left with the monies that we received from AARP, and I can't do it right now. That's something I have to go back and pull all the separate individual parts.
All right. Okay. If you could do that for us, Joan, that's okay. And I don't know if we'd be able to have money from something else, but if we are...
You might. There may be money. We have the riverboat that you can always use until that's, you know, there'll be plenty yet, and we still have a few dollars in there.
Okay. All right. Well, if you could put some of that information together for us, because I don't think, the fire department is not quite ready to order it yet, right?
It'd be nice if we asked about this ahead of time.
Pardon?
I said it would be nice to have this before the meeting so that I can go through it, so you'd have it for the meeting.
Well, yeah. But we, you know, this is only coming up officially here at the meeting the first time about the Lucas machine, so, all right. Okay. So we will look to Joan to put some figures together for us of monies that might be available. And Joan will let us know them, you know, for our next meeting.